Fifteen seconds. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
So I will start and I will open the meeting, do a roll call, and then I'll turn it over to you, Rita, to do the call to order.
Sounds good.
You can go, Vanessa.
Thank you, Tracy. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 27th Watershed Planning Commission Meeting for Scott County. We'd like to welcome our newest Commissioner Pam Casilius, who will be joining us for her first commission meeting. I am going to do a roll call for all of the commissioners to my attendance. Commissioner Weaver?
I am here.
Commissioner Pint?
Present.
Commissioner Casilius?
Here as well.
Commissioner Thill?
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Shea?
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the meeting over now to Commissioner Weaver.
And I'm Marcus here as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Vanessa. I will call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of, or approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
We do have one request to make a modification to the agenda. Under item number two, under new business, we would like to make a correction to local water plan approvals. We would like to only approve Elko New Market and not Savage at this time.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. Any other suggested edits to the agenda? We need to vote on the agenda. Okay, do we have a motion to modify the agenda?
Commissioner Pint, we move to strike the Savage Local Water Plan from today's agenda.
And do we have a second?
Commissioner, second. Commissioner Shea will second.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pint?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Thill?
Aye.
Commissioner Verling?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner?
Aye.
All right.
Tom Wolf.
Has joined the meeting.
All right, so the motion has passed. Next is approval of the meeting minutes. So feel free to take a look at the minutes from February 24th, and if we have a motion to approve those minutes.
Commissioner Verling will approve the meeting minutes on February 24th.
Do we have a second?
Commissioners, they will second.
Yeah, sure, Shay. I'll second.
All right, I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pint?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Thill?
Aye.
Commissioner Verling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner?
Aye.
All right, the motion has passed. Next is approval of the 2020 meeting dates, and I believe those were in our packet. Vanessa, do you have anything to add on those?
Just to note a couple of things. Yes, Chairman. We have moved up the May commission date to the week before because of conflicts with Memorial Day. So that would be the week before. And then at the end of the year as well, it's a not conflict with the holidays in December, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the dates for 2020?
Commissioner Schmidt, to approve. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Casilius, seconds.
All right, I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pint?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Thill?
Aye.
Commissioner Verling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Shea?
Aye.
All right, motion has passed. Now we can move on to staff reports.
Troy, are you with us? Very quickly, Tracy, do you see Troy on the list? I do not. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the WMO staff reports. The SWCD staff report is in packets. It is possible. A little bit of difficulty signing in. So we'll keep an eye out for him, and if he's available to join in, we will add him at the end of the day. But otherwise, all the details for the SWCD update are really thoroughly put out in your packet for this month. And we do thank them very much for their hard work. So as you know, the SWCD is pretty much the arms and legs of our agency. This time, we've been working on them very thoroughly with our operations plan and what they carry out with us to ensure that social distancing, safe procedures are followed, and they are doing a wonderful job at that. So they're able to still continue most of that work for the WMO as well as the county. At this time, I was just going to give you a really brief update on one of the things that we have been working on. Every division within the county did need to put together what was called an operations plan to identify what our essential services are, and then how we would go ahead and deliver those essential services to our residents and our public to ensure that we can provide them what matters and also keep them safe as well as staff safe. Most of our essential services are actually still able to be carried out during this time, mostly because the work that we do is heavily based on working from our computers, able to do video conferencing and phone conferencing, as well as a lot of field work, which of course doesn't involve a lot of person-to-person contact. We have suspended in-person meetings, so we tend to attend a lot of partnership meetings in person, and we've replaced those with things like video meetings. A lot of our events, our educational events, are currently on hold. But we are looking for creative ways to perhaps hold those later on this year, perhaps as a webinar or something like that that's interactive. Melissa is working very heavily on getting our watercraft and EIS programs, monitoring programs, up and running. So that's again just Melissa and one other staff person arriving in separate vehicles. So that's of course a safe. We have decontamination equipment for them and personal protective equipment for staff. So if you want to go ahead and take a look at that operations plan, it did go through the county and all the way up and down for approvals. Staff has been very helpful and supportive of this, and all the divisions of the county have been extremely supportive and helpful in ensuring that we can continue to deliver what matters and keep things moving. Staff is working from home right now. None of the staff for the WMO is required to be on site, and we do have the technology to do so. The other couple of things we've been working on. Ryan did complete the Sand Creek Targeted Grant final report. As you remember, that was our big $2 million grant that we received from the Board of Water and Soil Resources. So that final report was submitted to the Board of Water and Soil Resources. We're very proud of Ryan and Melissa and everybody that's been a part of that, all of our partners. It's been wonderful. We are currently working on our 319 grant for the MPCA. That does open, we believe, in the next couple of weeks. They won't tell us exactly when that opens, to be fair. But that one hasn't really been delayed or postponed. The other one we're working on, that I'm working on, is the watershed-based funding for the next two rounds. That is a big meet that we'll be having on Wednesday. In addition to that, Melissa will touch base on the McMahon proposal. We also are assisting the drawdown for Markley right now. So we do have two lakes currently that do require us to do drawdowns and pumping. So those are other, two other big items that we're working on as a larger organization. Beyond that, pretty much business as usual. Things may be just a little bit slower and have to find creative solutions, but the public has been really wonderful to work with, and so is everybody at the county. So that is the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Vanessa? If there aren't any other, I have a quick question. Is it my understanding that the operations plan doesn't get approved by anyone? It just needs to be in place and then kept on file?
It gets approved by the director, and then it goes through approval to the administrator. So Leslie does approve it, and then the board actually approves those as well.
But not, no one at the state level?
Oh, that is correct. Nobody at the state level.
Thank you. Any other questions for Melissa? Or, excuse me, Vanessa?
Always.
Vanessa, this is Commissioner Shay. Just checking to you, are they planning or are we planning on pumping down a couple of the lakes again this year? Is that the plan?
The, it's a good question, Commissioner Shay. We, at the moment, did not have any funds in the budget for drawing down either Markley or McMahon. That being said, I am working with Brad and looking creatively at the budgets for different opportunities to find funding for those. For Markley, our portion of the partnership, I looked at some funds that we have either in the land and water treatment or in the fund balance. So we have a couple of options. We don't have a lot of extra funds. Drawing down McMahon would be closer to $30,000 to $40,000 like it was last year without the cost of installing some of that permanent infrastructure. So again, we have to look creatively at options because there wasn't anything identified in the budget to actually draw them down. And yet, at the same time, staff realizes that's a very real possibility. So the best answer I can give you is no, it was not in the budget. But yes, staff is very aware of it and anticipating that's probably likely to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, should we move on to old business?
All right. Ryan, did you, are you ready to provide project update?
Madam Chair, Vanessa, yes, I am, I'm ready. So Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. Just a few updates for you in terms of projects. So as Vanessa said, our Clean Water Fund targeted watershed grant has come to an end. We submitted everything on time. The termination date was April 11th. However, we could not continue to incur costs after March 11th. So it, costs ended March 11th. Turning everything in was April 11th. And thanks to everybody's help, staff, Vanessa, Megan, and Melissa, we were able to pull together a fairly nice report, which is also available on our website as well. Also, we have a current EPA grant we are working on that's also in the Sand Creek Watershed. We are looking at an extension. So MPCA staff actually contacted us amidst the COVID-19 situation to see if we would be open to extending that grant another year. We were planning on wrapping it up by August of this year, and largely, we still plan on having most projects done. However, it's always nice to have that extra leeway in case a project does fall through unexpectedly. Then we could potentially still have then the fall construction season and potentially even spring of 2021. So it maximizes our chances of utilizing all the funds associated with the grant. So we have not heard back from them yet, but they are working on it, and hopefully, we see something here soon. We also are wrapping up our quarter one reporting for that grant. So each quarter, we have to submit all our expenditures. That will be submitted this week. We'll have that completed. And lastly, our CIP construction, our Phase 4 site. The contractor and I have been in conversations over the last couple of weeks about when they will start up. The latest update I have is later this week. They plan on starting or early next week. Now, we do have some rain in the forecast for tomorrow, so that may potentially impact their ability to complete all the work. And if so, then we just have to delay it a little further. But if it doesn't, that is the plan. And we've also been in conversations with the landowner. He's looked at the site, and so just want to make sure, because a lot of the remaining items are restoration. And so we want to make sure the landowner is satisfied with how the site is buttoned back up in the end. And then obviously, we have some plantings as well, because at the time, construction stopped in January, would have been fairly difficult to get trees and shrubs planted. So both of those two things are the, kind of the main items, is restoration cleanup and planting. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Ryan, for Pam's benefit, or anyone else who doesn't remember, could you give a quick recap on Phase 4 and what that project was?
Madam Chair, yes. So Phase 4 was a project that we had identified in a feasibility study in 2015. So we had a large grant. The grant I had mentioned, the Clean Water Fund targeted watershed grant, was a $2.2 million grant that we were awarded in 2015. And with those funds, we had several tasks associated with them. Some could be used for education, some could be used for our cost share projects. And then one task was identifying acute sediment sources along Sand Creek. And so we actually, Phase 4 represented the fifth site that we had actually constructed using those funds. And what they were, we found in the feasibility study, is that those acute sediment sources largely were sites along Sand Creek where the creek had actually gone outside of its normal floodplain and was eroding the toe of a bluff. So some of the bluff sites were just shy of 100 feet from stream toe to top. Others were smaller. This one was actually one of the smaller sites. And we had identified four particular sites on this landowner's property to potentially look at for stabilization. Because our grant funds were dwindling, we could only actually construct one site. Two of them were deemed, the environmental benefits weren't high enough to pursue. So we looked at two sites, narrowed it down to one that we felt we could afford, which is the last site that was constructed. And the methods for stabilization entail, basically, it's a log jam structure, which, for lack of a better term, I kind of compare it to like Lincoln Logs. So they stack these larger 25-foot-in-length logs with a diameter of 15 inches, a minimum diameter. And they start stacking those along the stream toe, and there are six layers of them. So you actually get, you start out kind of subgrade digging them in. And by the time you're done, you are a couple feet to maybe three feet above kind of the normal water flow or water elevation. And what that's doing is those, there's a series of them, and they actually push water away from the bluff. So it's alleviating that pressure and the continual washing of the toe and kind of keeping that flow more in the middle of the stream versus along that stream edge. And then also, to maintain the same profile width, the inside bend of the stream has to be excavated out. So if the stream was, let's say, 25 feet wide to start, these log jams maybe stick out 10 feet roughly. So, and we don't want to narrow up the stream. We have to excavate out to basically keep that same profile, and we're just kind of pushing the water away. So Commissioner Casilius, do you have any questions about that?
No, thanks. Thanks, I appreciate that explanation. That was really helpful.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Weaver, I'd like to have a question for Ryan. Commissioner Pint?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, so Ryan, I had a chance to do a kind of a quick visual of that site. I believe it's the one that's a couple hundred yards upstream from the railroad crossing there. And I noticed that immediately downstream of that, closer to the railroad track, is a significant erosion, two banks actually, which are certain to threaten the structures up above. Looks like the zip line stations or whatever. Have you had much thought about that particular site and whether or not there's any potential or project there?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pint, great observation. So both of the downstream sites from our last current site. So one is on the same property as the landowner we just worked with, and that would be the one immediately downstream of it. That site is actually at a 30% design stage. Why we didn't pursue that one is the initial estimation from the design firm was the cost exceeded what we had remaining for budget. So that one was actually our number one site on the property we wanted to pursue, but at that time, we did not have enough funds to go after it. So it remains in the WMO comprehensive plan as a potential future CIP site that if we're successful obtaining grant funds, that we may then pursue in the future. The next downstream site is on a different property owner's land, which would represent the zip line. We did have conversations with them. So that was actually the, out of the feasibility study, the number one site to pursue for stabilization. These opportunities are completely voluntary with the landowners. And upon having conversations with them at that time, they declined to pursue stabilization. And so then we moved on to other sites.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ryan? All right. Vanessa, are you up with the McMahon Lake Outlet legislative proposal? Who covers that one?
That would be me, Madam Chair. But I do have a quick project update to give.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Just a quick one. The rest of my, the rest of my updates are actually on the agenda. But just for curly leaf treatments, we are moving forward with those this year. Cedar Lake was treated already on April 15th. The reason why it was treated before any other lakes is we are using a different chemical on cedar, and that needs to be put into the lake a little bit earlier, and we are treating the entire lake. This chemical is a lot cheaper than the one we were using, so we can continue to treat the whole lake with this one. So PLM is our vendor. We've got a three-year contract with them. They're monitoring the concentration of it, and then they'll add another dose about two weeks from the original date that they treated. Just, it's called a bump to increase the concentration again, because this chemical takes a longer time to do its job. But I will be starting pre-treatment surveys when I hear from volunteers that I have kind of watching hear the lakes for me that curly leaf is growing. So I've got Commissioner Verling and Bull Lake kind of watching vegetation there for me, and I have another volunteer on Oudal Lake kind of watching that. I'll have to monitor McMahon myself by running out there. But once I know it's kind of growing on Oudal and Bull, I'll know when to kind of go out for McMahon Lake as well. So I will have, as Vanessa said, a staff person from Environmental Health to help me with those surveys following our protocol and our operations plan. That's all I have for project updates under that category.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Melissa? Okay, am I missing anyone else with project updates before we move on? Okay, back to you, Melissa.
Okay, so I'm going to be a little bit long-winded with this one, the McMahon Outlet legislative proposal. I'm hearing a little bit of feedback. I don't know if anyone else hears that, but.
Yeah. If I could, point of order, if, not point of order, I apologize. Tracy, if you could mute Mr. Looney, that is causing feedback right now. Yep.
Okay, so for the benefit of Commissioner Casilius, I'm going to just kind of give a quick little background or recap on McMahon Lake, what's been happening out there.
Oh, there it is.
So water, McMahon Lake is a landlocked basin, and the water levels have been rising on McMahon Lake for the last several years. Last year, the water level rose to 2.6 feet above the ordinary head water level. It's the highest it's ever been. It was getting really close to two septic systems on two people that live on the lake. A lot of people on McMahon Lake have done lakeshore restorations with the WMO and the SWCD, and all those restorations were underwater. The public access was flooded all year. It, the water level was getting close to impacting County Road 8 and Mushtown Road. It was causing large pieces of land to break off on the lake, causing these huge floating bogs to really be a safety issue for boaters on the lake. So last year, a couple of the landowners on the lake, including Commissioner Shay and another resident, his name is Noah Levi, contacted their local legislators and had them come on out and to see what's going on out there. Because as the WMO, we don't have enough money to install a long-term fix for the lake, which would be a permanent outlet structure. So we did get permission to put together a grant application to the DNR for the flood mitigation, the flood mitigation grant that they have. And the local legislators, which were Representative Albright and Senator Pratt, came out on the lake. Commissioner Shay and I think Noah were both giving them a tour of the lake and showing them all the issues that were going on. And Senator Eric Pratt actually sponsored a bill for a permanent water control structure on McMahon for a grant from the state's general fund. So it would have been a different pot of money than the DNR flood mitigation grant that we. So it would have been a different pot of money than the DNR flood mitigation grant that we um, were applying for. Um, so because he had sponsored that bill, um, myself and um, Noah was chosen um, to present to the legislature um, on March third. So myself and Noah testified in front of the Environment and Natural Resources Finance Committee at the Minnesota State Senate. Um, Claire Rubling, our Scott County Legislative Liaison was there, Vanessa was there um, in support of us. And we were supposed to hear in May, um, whether we would get funding or not. Um, but because of our uh, new situation right now, um, Claire um, did send me an update um, on April seventeenth, which was initiated by Noah on Levi sending her an email. Um, and, and I'm just going to read what she had stated in that email that, um, following the shutdown, we did get the project included on a list of other proposed statewide funding mitigation, flood mitigation projects that could be funded by the DNR if they get money from a proposed bonding bill. The original idea to get a grant from the general fund as proposed in the bill that Senator Pratt was sponsoring, that was heard in front of the Senate Environment Committee, is basically out of the question now with the extra costs and the loss of tax revenue due to the pandemic. Um, Claire stated that she knows the chairs of the capital investment committees are quietly working on their bills and those will emerge in the next few weeks. But it's difficult for her to have um, much input right now with everything shut down. She recommended to Noah in the email that's best, that their best bet is to get um, Representative Albright and Senator Pratt to push the project uh, with the bond, bonding committee chairs. So contacting them would be helpful for them. Um, and she'll also remind them of our request. But unless the DNR gets its full funding request for flood mitigation um, projects, that she's not hopeful that we'll see any funding for this project this session. Um, and even if the DNR does receive their twenty million dollar funding request, um, they have a long list of projects, um, other flood mitigation projects from around the state um, that would, we would be competing against because we'd still have to go through their criteria and their scoring process. So um, it's kind of where things are at right now. We, we did, as you know, set aside a hundred and thirty thousand dollars towards um, uh, a cost share towards the DNR grant. Um, that hundred and thirty thousand was determined by um, the feasibility study that we had done early last year. Um, since that time, I had to put together a proposal for the legislature and that cost, the total cost of what an actual outlet would cost to put in was, is much higher than we originally anticipated. So um, which is around six hundred thousand dollars. So our hundred and thirty thousand dollars doesn't even cover half of it. So we were looking for funding from other sources. So at this point, uh, you know, we'll have to see how things kind of fall out, but um, you know, having a little bit, you know, having Claire's input was helpful. Um, so I guess we'll have to see after May, you know, what our next steps would be.
Um, question, uh, clarification on that. The total you said was about six hundred thousand and we had set aside the one thirty. But since the six hundred thousand came in higher, do we have to come up with a higher cost share also? Or would the potentially the DNR's FDR grant cover the rest?
Well, the DNR grant requires a fifty percent match. So we would have to come up with half of the six hundred thousand. So we would have to come up with another um, you know, hundred and fifty thousand.
Any other questions for Melissa? Okay, I think we can move on to the twenty twenty watercraft inspections item.
Madam Chair, that's me again. Um, so we did uh, decide to do watercraft inspections again. Uh, we thought that they went really well. Um, I did receive a quote from Waterfront Restorations again. They were the company that we used last year. Um, they, what was nice is they did drop their price this year a little bit from last year, which I'm not sure why, but. Um, so I do have a draft contract finished and uploaded to our, our contract site that is working its way through our contract approval process. I've been working on um, filling out the paperwork with the DNR. We have to do a delegation agreement. We have to put together a plan for them on which lakes we want inspections done at. Um, but it's still unclear on whether the DNR will allow watercraft inspections to occur this year or not. Um, but we want to be ready, um, if they do allow it. So um, so tentatively, I have inspections in our contract to start the weekend of June twelfth. Um, and the funds for this program come from the Minnesota Legislature Aquatic and Basin Species Prevention money. So they don't even come out of the WMO budget. And that's all I have on that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions on that? Okay, I think we can move on to new business.
All right, that's me. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, tash, you'll find in your packet the twenty nineteen annual report and newsletter uh, for your recommendation and hopefully your approval. Uh, it was a very, very busy year for CIPs, uh, as well as some additional efforts like McMahon. As, as Melissa mentioned, uh, we have, of course, encountered a couple of barriers, but we're not giving up on it now. So you'll know that those continue to roll over into the twenty twenty work plan as well. Um, a couple of things I just wanted to point out in the twenty nineteen annual report. Uh, overall, annual revenue uh, was actually one million, six hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is roughly three hundred and ninety thousand dollars less than the amended budget, uh, largely due to reearthsments under the three nineteen grant being less than budgeted and water-based funding being less than budgeted. Overall expenses were also less than budgeted by roughly four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Again, the land and water treatment, education and inventory assessment programs were the largest contributors to expenses being under budget. Um, overall, we came in a little bit better than projected. Uh, originally, the fund balance usage was going to leave a fund balance ending of about two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred for the end of twenty nineteen. Uh, we're coming in a little bit uh, better at um, three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred. Uh, so again, the, the biggest change in actual versus projected for twenty nineteen really had to do with anticipating when grant funds would come in versus when we're transferring those funds over. Uh, as you know, we, we hold those funds in an account, so until they are encumbered, we don't consider them used. We are expecting the rest of those revenues to actually come in in twenty twenty and actually balance everything up and still maximize those grants. It just turned out that uh, when things went in versus when grants were going to come in, uh, rolled over a little bit into twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen. So the work and everything was generally on time. It was just projecting when, which year those things would occur, uh, which makes the budget look a little bit off, but overall it actually balances out quite well. Uh, I would stand for any questions.
If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve the annual report?
This is Commissioner Pint. I'd like to uh, move that we recommend uh, for approval, the uh, twenty nineteen annual report as presented to us.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Verling would second.
All right, I will do a roll. Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pint.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Verling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And Commissioner Xia.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion is passed. On to the local water management plan approvals.
Madam Chair, that's me again. Um, so in your packet, I included a, a letter that I had sent to um, Renee Christensen at the City of Alcoa New Market. Um, they submitted their draft plan in late December. Uh, with our organization review, we are required to consider Met Council's comments. Um, I did that and I felt that the city had addressed what Met Council um, asked for in their letter. Um, I even asked our water resources engineer, Megan Tosca, to review a couple pages just to make sure I was understanding the city versus um, what Met Council had um, stated as their concerns. Um, Megan and I came to the same conclusion that the city had already covered um, the comments in their plan. So staff feels that their plan meets the requirements of Minnesota Statute one oh three B and Minnesota Rule eighty-four ten and the Scottt to Mable additional items that we asked um, the cities to cover um, in their new plan updates. So with that, this is an action item and we're looking for a recommendation to move the plan onto the county board for final approval.
Any questions for Melissa? And if not, do we have a motion to move the plan onto the county board for approval?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Shea. I'll, I'll make a motion to uh, to move it on to the board approval.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Verling, I'll second that.
All right, I'll do a roll. Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pint.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Verling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Xia.
Aye.
Motion is passed. And now we're going to jump down to the Adam Simon Grass Waterway.
Um, Madam Chair, there's uh, there is an informational item for the Savage Local Water Plan.
Oh, I thought we were, we took that off the agenda. We're still.
Well, we, sorry, we took it off as an action item.
Oh, got it.
Still on, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, no problem. Um, so in your packet again, is a memo, uh, is a memo that I uh, sent to um, Jesse Carlson at City of Savage. Um, their plan was dated January twenty twenty, but we didn't actually receive the, the actual draft until the end of February. Um, so my letter in your, in the packet, if, um, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things, a couple of the comments that I had in there. Uh, but the plan was missing some required information that was required from Rule eighty-four ten. Um, it's, and also the city does have a comprehensive wetland management plan, which is, uh, most of the cities don't, but the city Savage does. So we would need to review that as part of our local plan review for them, and that wasn't supplied to us. I did go looking for it on their website, couldn't find it. Um, so that, that's why that's included in the letter as well. Um, and I just asked for some clarifications on a few other sections of the plan, so I, I don't feel it's ready for approval yet. Um, again, you can see in the memo that it's dated early April. So at the moment, I'm just waiting for a response back from them and um, an updated draft of their plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions for Melissa? Okay, now I think we can move on. Who's up for the um, ESAC's app, application?
That would be Ryan, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, I'm here to discuss the Adam Simon Grass Waterway application. So this is a project that is located in Cedar Lake Township. Uh, the applicant is requesting seven thousand, thirty-two dollars of WMO funds and they would pay an estimated one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars for a total project cost of eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, uh, represents eighty percent cost share, which is per our twenty twenty docket. Uh, the WMO funds would come from the EPA grant, so the grant I was referencing earlier uh, that we are looking to get an extension on. So currently, it would expire in August of twenty twenty. And if so, this project is still slated to be completed before then. However, if we do get an extension, um, and something were to fall through, um, then this project could be still constructed in the fall or spring, fall of this year or spring of next year. Uh, we do have the funds available in the grant. Uh, the project is a three hundred linear foot grass waterway in combination with a diversion. So Adam actually installed another grass waterway in his property, I think, two years ago. And um, there is some erosion that is occurring near the waterway. And so this additional waterway and diversion would help further bolster that waterway or protect it, um, plus addressing the ephemeral erosion in the field. The reason it is here today in front of you is that it requires a screening committee recommendation because the environmental benefits exceed uh, the hundred dollars a ton of sediment. The Scottish WCD did review this project at their April twenty first meeting and recommended approval. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ryan? Do we have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Verling, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Adam Salmon, Simon Grass Waterway application.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner. Commissioner Casilius will second.
All right, thank you. I will do a roll. Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pint.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Verling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And Commissioner Xia.
Aye.
All right, motion is passed. I think we have just about made it to the end of our first WebEx meeting. This, I think it went very well. So um, hats off to Vanessa and Tracy and all you guys for getting this, this going and making it work. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Phil. I'll motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's Commissioner Shea. I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, I'll do one last roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pint.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Phil.
Aye.
Commissioner Verling.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And then Commissioner Xia.
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. We'll adjourn and hopefully meet in person in a month.